Good morning. We're calling this morning's meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the call of approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We got a motion to second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just as a note, Paul will not be at the meeting today. Any next thing? Citizens to be heard? Is there anybody on the computer asking me here?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And I see everybody here is on the agenda. Next thing, approval of payment and bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
And we got a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have the minutes from July 11th to approve.
Move approval. Second.
We got a motion to second to approve the minutes from July 11th. All in favor?
Aye.
With that, we'll go into the... Cory, I guess he's going to redo the whole Resource Recovery Center?
Not the whole thing, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I thought there was all.
As you may know, the floor in the public drop-off area at the Resource Recovery Center in the winter is very slippery. They polished it when they finished it, and anytime snow or water gets on it, we have a slip hazard. So we've looked into several options to try and mitigate the problem. The best option that we could come up with is to shot blast and grind the concrete down and apply an Aquapel sealer. The cost of the project will be $33,837 and would be completed before fall. They're looking at sometime in September if we were to approve it today. Again, it's probably the best option we could come up with. The other options are heated, which is an ongoing expense and would cost upwards of $100,000. We were going to try and grind it off. That came up to like $70,000. So after all the research, this is the option we've come up with. So I did run it by the SWAC Board, and they had some other questions. I got those questions answered, and they gave us approval to come here. So that would be my request from today.
Sounds like a good idea to get it done.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As noted, we did talk a long time about this. We asked for some additional information, knowing that it is a larger expense. I also agree, heating is not necessarily the best option. I have a heated garage, and even so, when there's water on the garage floor, it is a very slippery surface. So in order to keep our staff and the public as safe as can be there, this really is something that is needed to be done as soon as possible. Certainly, this, as said, was an expense we weren't anticipating, but it will come out of the solid waste general fund budget.
Any further discussion?
Move for approval.
Second.
You know, I guess most ask us any further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Reston, request approval to reduce retainage to 0.2%.
Yes, good morning. So I'd like to request approval to reduce retainage to 0.2% for SAP 14-594-001. So this is a LRIP project in the city of Dilworth. The only thing that remains on the project is some minor punch list items. This payment was approved by the City of Dilworth Council, and project has gone through a walkthrough with state aid and was in compliance.
Was there supposed to be striping on that road?
There's some striping.
Yeah, just the first 100 feet, probably.
Yep.
Is that a bike way on that thing, too?
It's the path. It's the path on the east side, the 10-foot. And just as project sponsor, obviously, all the payments have to go through us, so that's why I'm here to request this.
Okay.
Overall, I think the project turned out really nice.
Very nice.
Big improvement for the city.
Use it often. Yes?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Does the 0.2%... Would that cover the punch list items that are not done yet?
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd move approval.
Got a motion to approve the reducing it to 0.2%?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
For today's highlight, Chanel with her budget proposal.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Permission?
Commissioners, thank you for having me. I thought I'd quick go over just a little bit about community supervision. There was... There has been discussion most recently about having three delivery systems. So I just wanted to highlight that Clay County is served by the Minnesota Department of Corrections, which is one of those delivery systems. The county has a contract with the Department of Corrections that is through statute, so there is no annual contract update, but rather language within the statute. And so we kind of have a partnership over the years that we work together, the state and the county. Through the recent justice reinvestment initiative, typically the county has put in, I would say, 70% of costs for gross misdemeanor, misdemeanor, and juvenile supervision within the county. And due to the justice reinvestment initiative, we were afforded a grand sum this year from legislature, which we're very excited about. In the past, I've come before the board, and we've kind of budgeted $110,000 towards community supervision for that gross misdemeanor, misdemeanor, and juvenile population. And this year, Clay County is receiving $261,344 based on a fiscal year. And so we will start to receive that already here in July. The county will receive monthly payments. I will be responsible to do like a report to the state how we're utilizing those funds within the county. So we're really excited about that. So as you look at the budget proposal for 2024, we've increased significantly. I'm thankful to legislature looking at kind of the overall within law enforcement, probation, and corrections. It really takes a grand effort. Some other things specific to the budget, agent salaries have increased but often fluctuate just because we have agents that are able to transition to a different caseload. We have three levels of agents. We have initial agents, we have senior agents, and then we have career agents. So based upon those reallocations, that impacts our budget. You'll see a 100% increase to the part-time salary, which I just pulled that out of regular salaries. So it has been in the budget before, but I just isolated that. That is a county support staff position that is 30 hours a week. And so it's not any more money. It's just putting it into a different bucket under part-time salaries. Health insurance, there was an increase, again fluctuating, especially with the contracted DOC staff. Some opt for families, some opt for singles. So you'll see a change with that. Just wanted to highlight that line item 6271, that's what we utilize for our drug testing supplies and use of translators. So that may change from year to year. And line item 6820 is in reference to our juvenile restitution program. And then we've also utilized it for construction in the past. I think that was approximately a year ago, maybe two. Other department updates, maybe I should pause and ask if there's questions pertaining to the budget. I apologize.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So the health insurance, that's coming in at a 32% increase? So are you under... Are you guys... You're under a state?
Correct.
Okay.
And so I think it's roughly for a single insurance, the state contributes about $10,000, and for family insurance, they contribute $20,000. And so depending on who, what options the staff choose, that's kind of where you're going to see that influx.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I think you've had some staffing changes since the last budget, that it's not just the increased cost to your interns, but it's the people who are in those positions.
Correct. We had some retirements. We've had some resignations. We've had an agent transition from our felony office over to our contract office. And so that's kind of the anticipated outcome. And I'd probably take this moment to highlight, the DOC has not done any market analysis, wage analysis for at least 20 years. And so I believe our salaries would align with that, and the DOC often indicates that we have good benefits. And so I would say that our salary is not necessarily competitive. We've lost some individuals to other county agencies, and so on and so forth. I recently learned that our support staff who do the same work are paid less than our county support staff within the same position.
Mr. Chair, one more question. So when I look at this, your... The revenues from proposed 2024 are up about $147,000 versus 2023? And you talked about... And your expenditures are up about $70,000. So why would we be seeing a 7.89% increase if our revenues are exceeding the expenditures... Increases? To me, the math doesn't add up there.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I'll reach out to Lori to see. We... This wasn't the document. The document was updated before we... After we reviewed it.
Do you understand what I'm saying, though?
Yeah.
Because it's showing revenues being up $140,000 and expenses being up far less than that. So you shouldn't... If anything, you should be minus, you know? So there's something, obviously, not right within this document.
And I can connect with Lori as well afterwards.
And I'm sure, you know, Steve can probably just send us all an update on...
I haven't seen the final one since after Steve, Lori, and I met. I have what I was provided that day. I know that there was... I had entered in some proposed information, initially not knowing what was afforded through legislature. And kind of the DOC finance unit is still working on some information. We were hoping to get that prior to doing county updates. Supervisors have requested that and offered to the Department of Corrections that we are meeting with our county boards right now. And if we could get that information, unfortunately, we don't have that right now specifically. But I agree. I'll reach out with Lori and see if there's some updates to look at.
Thank you.
Some other updates for the department. Our STS crew leader is out on military leave, followed by parental leave, and therefore I have requested the state to waive the bill back during that period of time, given that we don't necessarily have a crew. I am trying to take out a crew one or two times a week just to keep up with county activities such as the parades or loco days, things like that. So I've offered that to Lori, so we'll see if... To ensure that there is no bill back to the county for the time that our STS crew leader is out on leave. I also wanted to offer, last year or during this last fiscal year, the state decided not to assess supervision fees to individuals on supervision. At the felony level, those were $300, flat rate fee. They decided that it's best that individuals that are on supervision in the community utilize their resources towards programming, whether that's sex offender treatment programming, CD treatment, domestic violence treatment, those kind of things. They have indicated that in misdemeanor cases, where it was $200 for gross misdemeanor and $100 towards misdemeanor files, those will sunset in 2027. And so we will no longer collect those fees as well, which will also impact our county budget. In the past, we've used those fees collected towards the juvenile restitution program. We've also used that for client incentives. I am confident that we can utilize the additional funds that were just recently granted that are year-to-year, not biennial, for... To continue those efforts. So we shouldn't see a loss by any means. We'll make sure that we prioritize those things. We continue to do a victim impact panel in this community. We have one coming up this Thursday. We do assess a $50 fee, which also is utilized for client support in the community. We've utilized it for bus passes for individuals to get to their appointments and court and those kind of things. And then the final thing is, I know there is a vision to have a justice center and combine our gross misdemeanor, misdemeanor, and juvenile office with our felony office. And so I just thought I would offer that we continue to work on that. We're looking at space within this courthouse, working with Joe, closely with the county, and hope to land somewhere soon.
Good. Any other questions? Okay. You got more to present there?
That's it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
With that, we'll move on to Mr. Milton for the attorney budget.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Always a pleasure to come here and present budget to you. A lot of times, it's better when I don't have this high percentage of increase that I'm looking at. But we'll walk through it, and I'll explain some of the increases and bases. So you look at the revenue side of things. That's formulated from Lori. Those are refunds that we regularly get through working with social services, whether it's child support or CHIPS cases, also from fees coming off of court cases. So that's the formulated piece. Obviously, we're not a money generating office. We don't use a lot of grants, other than through the victim services side of things, which we can look at in a second. But otherwise, that's the fee piece that we take in, and that's the increase that we're seeing based on the formula for next year. Moving to the revenues, then, you'll see the increase budget-wise. I think some of the increases that you'll see in there are due to either some of the things that are showing up in the budget for the first time. The chief assistant for civil that had not been but had been created is now showing up within the budget. I think that's probably one of the main increases, then just cost of living that's shown up. So you'll see that piece, just an increase in cost. And then under the new request, we had the ARPA money that came in two years ago that we utilized to hire a new part-time person. We use it as a part-time. Initially, we had used it as hiring somebody under a two-year contract, but we had some resignations and moved, you know, a couple different times, that person that was hired into a permanent position. And then ultimately, it became difficult to hire somebody under, at that point, then a one-year contract period. And ultimately, we were able to utilize the money from the ARPA that's been helpful with a part-time person. But there's no question, even two years ago, we were in need of a person to get hired. So ARPA money definitely was helpful in delaying that, if you will. But it's still definitely a need. And so that's where you see the new request would be for the new regular salaried person that would be replacing that ARPA-funded person. So... But I would just want to point out to you that that... Whether that isn't just that ARPA came along and made us desire a new person. We were going to need a new person anyway. And likely, we're going to need a new... This person that we're looking at right here is currently working in our civil position. And we've seen just a large increase within our CHIPS cases and things coming from social services. Our commitment cases have really gone through the roof. Some of our guardianships, conservatorships have started to really plus up as well. And so those are all increases that we've seen. But criminal cases as well, we're seeing increases. And I expect next year, we'll be looking for an increase in an attorney on the criminal side as well. So that is the new request there for that attorney. Questions on that at all? I think, other than that, the only other increase under the 6246 trial prosecution, you can see where we've typically been below. We've had quite a few large-scale, larger-scale either murder cases, some bigger crim... sexual assault cases, a few bigger drug cases that cause a little larger scale for prosecution. So we've missed that mark over the last few years. So just look to increase that by $1,000 to try to get a little closer to where we've been seeing that come up. But I think the rest, for the most part, fairly remain the same. Going to the next page, the only item on there is drug court. That $30,000 piece has remained the same, and there's been no requested increase through drug court. So we'd ask that remain the same as well. So you can see the percentage increase that would come. And then, obviously, with the new request, where are we at for that percentage? So if there's no questions, then the victim services side of things as well, they do have grant money, both through coming up there in the revenues and then under the Volca side of things. So you see where those... Excuse me, those numbers come in on the revenue side. Salaries have increased, just in the portion that... Percentage-wise, that part-time salary piece under line 6106, that's the position that was approved last year and is showing up for the first time this year in our budget. So that's the... Our part-time person within the victim services that the board approved for last year. So that's why it's showing up as 100%, showing up for the first time in the budget. Beyond that, though, the secondary piece, you know, beyond the attorney position that was asked for and that was through ARPA, the other piece that was added into the victim services is the restorative justice individual who went into the schools. And as I think many of you would recall here on the board, we did do a lot of work with the schools. I know that many of you participated in some of those meetings, really trying to work to get restorative justice into the schools, get ahead of it. So it's not even... It's not even mainly focused in the county attorney's office. We're working directly with the schools, partnering with them, so we can get those cases addressed as quickly as possible, working with, whether it's teachers, principals, superintendents. And so that program is currently funded through ARPA through this next school year, so through June of next year. But then we would need to start budgeting if we want to keep that position, keep that program going. So that's where we're looking at budgeting under the new request, regular salary for that restorative justice person's currently in the school. So that would be my other request. I know that ultimately, my increase comes in at about 37%, which is much higher than I think I've seen just about everybody else's. I think both positions are important. If you were asking me which one is more of a need versus a want, the... Clearly, the attorney position is something we have to have. We're just... That's the increase in population, increase in caseloads, increase coming from whether social services or more things coming in from law enforcement. We're just seeing those increases and need that. The restorative justice piece is doing great. And I think it's an important piece that we want to keep doing and should desire to keep, you know, kids out of the system and out of the court system if we have to. But if the board was looking at or questioning, you know, or saying that's too much of an increase, then I would be looking at the attorney position versus their started justice position. So I just want to tell you that upfront, if... How we're looking at things. But that is really my budget. So my... The majority of increases, obviously, are through salary, and that's where we're at. Any questions?
Yes. Go ahead, Dave.
Mr. Milton, I agree with you on restorative justice. It's valuable. It's an intervention early, which is where you need them. As far as funding it, have you considered looking at some of the public safety funding that's available from the legislature, or are there any other grant opportunities?
Yeah. And thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I've talked a little bit to Steve about that. I mean, I've... Knowing that we have some of that public safety money that's out there, we may try to look at that to help offset, say, even another year or whatever it'd be. That is a possibility, to do something like that. So we'll consider that. Other grant-wise, I would say no. If you recall, or if you even turn to the second page, you'll see where we used to pay under... That's where the salaries, you know, the specific line item for restorative justice. And we lost that grant funding back, you know, we kept scaling back. And that was a five-year grant, and it reduced down on the last two years and then was gone. And there's not really, at least anything that I know of, or anything that Michelle Carney, my restored... Or excuse me, my victim witness coordinator that monitors and manages the restorative justice side of things, she's pretty good at looking for those things. And I wouldn't... I don't know of any other grant funding that would be out there at this point.
Any other questions? Explain it well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I was just... I just want to clarify. You mentioned that your... You said your budget was up 37%. Is that what you said?
Well, I think if you looked at the bottom line total...
The bottom line that you looked at there, that's actually the percentage of the current year's budget spent, 37%.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, we have people listening here and...
22%.
Yeah. Well, on the victim witness portion, it's 22%, right? And on your...
9% for mine.
9% on your other one.
Right. I guess, now that you see that, Commissioner Campbell, I was thinking that was the actual grand total, but now that I see it...
No, yeah.
You're right, that that's the percentage of expenditure above 9% and then down below with victim services, 22%.
Yeah, to get the true actual percentage, you'd have to take your total revenues, first total expenditures of both, and then you could calculate out that based on... But it's not 37%.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that. I was thinking that was in my mind. I was just thinking grand total, but you're right. That's the percentage of the year, correct. Sorry about that. Any other corrections?
Say 15%.
Right. Doesn't look so bad now, right?
You know, and I... You know, the question was raised about the... Some of that legislative money that's in there, and obviously, part of it was to deal, could be used for county attorneys as well. And so I hope that there is some conversation there. You know, I know that ARPA benefited all the taxpayers by... Over the past two years, by not having to have, you know, those positions at that time levied. And instead, it was paid with ARPA dollars. So that was an area where all taxpayers benefited from it. At the same point in time, I think with this new... I know that the sheriff's going to have some things. And but at some point in time, I hope we... Because as of right now, all the... in time, I hope we, because as of right now, all the presentations, we've seen none of those dollars have been incorporated into their current budgets or what there might even, new requests that they might have that could be offset. So hopefully, we can-
And Commissioner Campbell, I think as you've mentioned, Commissioner Eberle's asked about it. I've had some preliminary talks with Steve, but hadn't really done much analysis. I know Sheriff Empting had looked a little deeper, but we're just starting to look at that and see if we could apply that to some of the county. I know it applies to the county attorney's office or can.
Yeah.
Now, we just need to look at if we could use it to offset either a salary piece or if it's, you know, salary increase, whatever else. There's maybe some possibilities there all the way around.
Well, even when it comes to that, was the number on a million dollars or something?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, $942,000 and change.
But even with that, I think it's important to understand, and you know, so all of the agencies or entities that would qualify, that have qualification for those funds, I still think it's going to be important to first weigh wants versus needs, too, you know. But, you know, the needs should rise to the top on those. And there might be needs within the attorney's department that are equally important, so.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, without, we move on to the request for approval change for order number one for the withdrawal and management detoxification.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify from Janelle Chaney's presentation, I did, Lori was watching, and the net on that, it's too bad she's not here, because she's now in the lead, it's a negative 10.92%.
Yeah, and I wanted to give her credit for that. And I want to, you know, we have somebody that set a new bar here.
So I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned before you this morning, is change order number one. This change order is broken into two separate pieces. The first item is, is we've had a great deal of discussion on building benchmarks and beyond, or B3, which it's known as. As you recall, at the beginning of this project, we'd reached out to the state of Minnesota because we'd received state bonding dollars and asking them if we had to follow this. They initially told us we did not have to follow B3. And therefore, we moved forward with our contracts and planning, not having B3 in, only for them to change their mind and determine that we had to do that. We did, as we moved forward, we put a educated number in there at $800,000. The CM, Gertz Construction, was ineligible to receive 5.5% of that because it was outside of the original scope of the project, which was $44,000. As we know, as the bids came in, that ended up being higher than the 800,000. It came in at $1,749,165. And so with that addition, Gertz Construction would be eligible to receive an additional $52,204, again, because that was outside of the scope of the original contract. This would have an impact on the budget. I see there's a typo. It's correct in the packet, but typo on the memo. That would bring the total cost of the project to $14,721,027. Any questions on that, Adam, before I move on?
Did you say that we don't have to follow the B3?
We had to, in the beginning, we thought we didn't have to follow it. We found out that we did have to follow it.
Right, okay.
And that's where this additional costs are coming from.
Okay.
So when they broke down, when we got our estimate, and they broke down what portion of the total project was attributed to B3, rather than the $800,000 that had been guesstimated and actually came in at 1.7 million, and that increased the CM fee eligible, so.
I think we're going to save money using the, I'm trying to come up with the word for it, the weld.
The thermal.
Thermal.
Thermal, yeah.
Thermal. I think we're going to save money that eventually on heating and stuff like that, too, though. So I think we eventually get some of that money back.
Okay. The second item is something that this board is more used to as far as change orders. This project has $400,000 in contingencies. But I will say, this is a little bit different from our CM at-risk projects. The CM, all of the $400,000 remains under your purview. And so you have total control. Under the previous projects, we've had an owner contingency and we've had a contractor contingency. The contractors have been able, were able to spend those funds on things that were not in the original plan or not anticipated without moving forward. Through this process, the board retains all insight over that $400,000. So there's four different items. One is a credit for you for this project, and electrical device changes, $5,528.78. The additions are a light pole relocation, with the addition of the withdrawal management, there's a light pole that was a part of the resource recovery facility that needed to be moved as part of the entrance to that facility. Installation of a missing sanitary line, I wouldn't say missing, I would say that there's a great deal of discussion that went into the planning of this 20 acres when the resource recovery facility, whether that was water retention, gas lines, and sanitary lines. As the price of the resource recovery facility increased, there was some, I guess, value engineering that took place, and the sanitary line was taken out of the original, of that original project, and so it showed up here. And so that was there. And then there was a below-grade insulation of the sanitary pipe of $1,865. We ended up having, initially, this spring, when we had precipitation, there was water sitting in an area in the foundation. Given the concerns that we had with water in a much deeper hole in the resource recovery facility, they moved that sanitary pipe up closer to the top, to the ground, and therefore, we needed some extra insulation. So the total increase with the credit here would be $21,118.31, leaving a contingency of $378,881.69. And with that, I would yield for any questions on either of the items.
Have we ever had a project where there was money left in the contingency?
We have, actually, Mr. Chair. The LEC had, actually, I think, right around $250,000.
Had the entire amount.
Yeah. And so I did have, I did have the opportunity to talk to Mr. Gertz yesterday afternoon. You've been getting updates. They've been providing updates, which I've tried to send to you each individually on Fridays. We are in the process right now. We are out of the ground. And so generally, when we look at our past projects, where we used a great deal of our contingencies was coming out of the ground. And so we're extremely hopeful that any surprises that we found on other projects won't be happening on this one. And so one of the things that we did process, you know, the hope would be is with the additional cost, we do receive, as you mentioned, we do receive any of the funds that we don't spend out of that contingency, which ultimately could offset the total cost.
Yeah, good deal.
I have a question in regards to, so the, there was, the B3 basically more than doubled in terms of what was estimated at the time that the bid came in. And so, you know, the fee to Gertz was anticipated at 5.5 of 800,000. Now it's 5.5 of 17, or 1.7.
Yep.
So, but how about, does that have any impact into our architect fees?
Just in the overall impact of, they get a percentage of the overall construction.
So, but I mean, that construction went from what was anticipated to be 800 to 17.
Right.
So are we going to, what are we going to see there?
Yeah. Well, I'll clarify with that for the board once we have that final number. That will shift with any of these. Hopefully, we're not, we're done with the changes of the overall price. But I'll get that information for you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the, let's see, change order number one.
Second.
Yeah, we've got a motion as second to approve change order number one. Any further discussion?
Just, do we need this? Does that one encompass both the payment to Gertz?
If we could include the increase to the total project cost as a part of that, that would probably be appropriate.
I would make that part of my motion.
Got it. Okay. All items will be included in that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Post. Very good. Okay. That settled.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Then we'll go right into approval of the point, the contract for legal services, commitment, guardianship, and conservatorship contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you recall, back in June, this board approved the ability to advertise RFQs for competitive quotes for legal services in regards to this contract due to a resignation of someone holding that contract. The RFQ here is looking for a qualified person to take this contract on from August 1 of this year to December 31 of 2024. And that is basically to stay in line with the other three contracts that we have in regards to CHIPS and paternity. And so we were fortunate to receive several qualified candidates. We conducted interviews last week, evaluated their experience and their bid process. And after that discussion and hiring process, the committee is recommending that we hire Alexis Madlam. Alexis has worked for the Public Defender's Office, showed a passion for working with this population that she'd be serving. And she also provided the lowest bid amount of the candidates that were interviewed of $4,000 per month. If she were to be selected for this position, we would, of the 17 months, we have $20,000 remaining for this year. And we would have a $48,000 total for 2024. As we look at this contract, it would be about $1,000 more than what we were paying under the previous person that had this contract. And so we would be looking to utilize $5,000 of fund balance to get through the remainder of this year. And then we would make the adjustment in the budget for 2024. That I'd yield for any questions.
Yes, good. Just refresh my memory on the amount we were paying before, and I believe there was an offer at one point to increase that.
We had, the contract before was for $3,000 per month, and we had offered over $4,000 as part of that process.
Is this on the attorney budget? Is that on your budget then?
No, this would be a separate line item, separate line item within the budget. It's not included in Brian's.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'll make a motion to extend a 17th month contract for legal services for commitment, guardianship, and conservatorship cases to Alexis Madlam at the compensation of $4,000 per month, and also approve the ability to pay for it with fund balance.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion as second to approve the contract to Alexis Madlam. That's 4,000 per month. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
With that, we'll go into committee reports. Chaney, you want to start us off today?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple weeks of reports. I, on June 11, attended a Lakeland construction meeting. We met at the Moorhead facility. They're expanding their clinic site, and construction is going quite well. They're shooting for November 1 opening. And they, if you're utilizing that clinic, it's, you'll need to park on the road for a while until they can get the parking lot done. But that is going on budget and on time. Pleased with that. I also attended, as many of you did, the Clay County Fair as part of the extension committee. And what a perfect weather forecast it was to see so many people from Clay County out there. So thank you to the Clay County Fair Board for the immense work that they do to get that event off the ground and running, and also to the Clay County Extension Office for their work. I attended the MetroCog Policy Board meeting. We had general business, approved the month-end reports and second quarter reports, and the 2022 financial audit. We had a public comment opportunity, which no one provided input on. But we did have a long report on the Interstate Operations Analyst Report. If any of you are interested in that exciting 25-minute presentation, you can go to MetroCog's website to see that. And did talk about the 2023-26 tip amendment. I often get asked, as different projects are going on around town, how the planning went into all of those. It really is, starts at MetroCog. So many different municipalities and organizations chipping in to make sure we're planning for the growth of our vibrant communities. So you really can learn a lot at the MetroCog website. And yesterday, attended the Lakeland Mental Health Board meeting at the Moorhead Clinic. We hosted the board there. Great reports from the Moorhead supervisors. Maybe to piggyback a little bit off of Brian's report in terms of restorative justice, when we paid for the restorative justice piece out of ARPA, it really was to combat some of the behavior issues that the school districts were seeing with children stemming from online school and the COVID pandemic. And as noted yesterday, with the supervisors, with our school-based services, some of those issues have not disappeared, and which is, kind of goes to the need for what Brian's talking about. But the needs that they're seeing within the schools, they are currently offering two days a week of mental health supports to kiddos at Barnesville Schools. That will increase to five days a week in September. And it's great that there are kids that have the opportunity to utilize those services. But it just speaks to the importance of some of those preventative care measures. And that school district is not the only school district in Clay County that's seeing that need, where they're hoping to increase days of availability at the Glendon Elementary School in Glendon or Delworth. Frank, I should know this.
Delworth.
Delworth. I knew I'd get it wrong. But hoping to have a full-time position there as well. And obviously, it's in the Moorhead area public schools, too. So in terms of adult services, they saw over 500 individuals in 2022. And it's fantastic that there is an organization like that that we have here so that people can get this mental health supports that they need. The budgets look great. There was some decreases in the revenues in terms of psychiatry. They're having some issues with staffing and vacations, but those will certainly level out. We did have a great report from Brian, who oversees the practitioner in our jail project. Certainly are utilizing that quite well. I believe he held a training for Kari staff in terms of some of the supports that they can provide. And I believe he's presenting statewide some trainings as a, using our facility as kind of a base model. So that was good to hear. And then yesterday, I also attended the DMV Design Meeting, kind of an arduous meeting. But we certainly are stepping through kind of the final technicalities in terms of cohesive colors and finishes so that it can align with what Joe's staff has on hand, and also ceiling heights and whatnot. That project is trekking along, so I'm really excited about what that will mean for us. In terms of, not committee report, but I did, was asked to serve on the AMC Tax Forficheur Work Group. That's a group that's going to meet three or four times in the next couple months to talk a lot about that Hennepin County Tax Forficheur case that was highlighted at our district meetings, wanting to have insight and input from communities of all sizes. our district meetings, wanting to have insight and input from communities of all sizes and areas of the state. So, I was really excited to be asked to serve on that. And was asked to attend a paving, paving job that's going on on 11th Street by Hornbuckers. The Concrete Paving Association of Minnesota had Senator Kupac, Representative Joy, Representative Keeler, and myself, along with City of Moorhead engineer. I know that Justin, our engineer, was invited but had a prior commitment to really show how, when you use concrete versus asphalt, how the longevity of your project sometimes outweighs the cost. And I know they referenced our Law Enforcement Center parking job, I believe. At that point, it made more sense financially for us to go with concrete over asphalt. And it's not always the best situation, but certainly makes sense sometimes. They are having a tour with some of the, the Chair of the Transportation Committee in September here locally. And I did encourage them to visit our County 26 job, to see how aware of industry can certainly break down expeditedly, expedite the breakdown of the road surface. So, that, I believe, concludes my reports.
Thank you.
Kevin? Thank you. Just to follow, that concrete project thing that went on 11th Street, I was also invited to that, but I actually had another commitment prior to that invitation, so I was unable to be there. And I'm glad, I'm glad you were able to be there for that. And then, I just wanted to follow up too regarding MetroCog. Do they, does MetroCog have any involvement with the MatBus transit? And again, you're well aware of this, but I, now that we've selected our site for the DMV, I think it's extremely important that a strong push gets on for us to have that access there. And I don't know if they've had those discussions yet at the MetroCog level?
Yeah. So, MetroCog has a different committee that I'm not on. It's called the Transportation Technical Committee. I did attend one to, for the exact reason that you're talking about. MatBus does have representatives there. And that, those conversations have had, started at a really high level. And I did reach out to Ari de Rosario, who is a MetroCog planner, for the same reason, to have continued conversations on how we best plan that. I think when I was gone last week, Steve had reached out to Dr. Zimmerman at the city about seeing if we could collectively ask for something like that and what that would take. And I believe I saw an email chain back and forth. But certainly, the more we can reach out, the better. There are City of Moorhead Council people that serve on the MatBus Planning Committee, which is separate from the Transportation Committee, that would be helpful to have conversations with.
I know Ryan Nelson is, serves on that, and I know we've had some conversations with him regarding that, and will continue to do that. But I appreciate anything that MetroCog can also do there. You know, that's a, people don't realize, but the DMV is also a place where our citizens can go who do not have driver's license, but they still need identification. And...
I think we're already trying to get bus service up there for the Substance Abuse Center.
Yeah, well, we tried that, and that, that in itself didn't go very far. But we, now with the DMV, it's critical to have that. So, I think we need to push all fronts on that moving forward. Okay, thank you. I'll start off, on Tuesday, last Tuesday, I did attend the legislative wrap-up that was put on by the Chamber with our local legislatures. That was at the Moorhead School District Offices. It was, you know, a lot of different takes on things, and things that were done, and things that would like to be done, and things that should have been done, and things that shouldn't have been done. And it was a variety of topics that went on there. I'm glad I attended to get their perspective on things. On Thursday, the 20th, we had our West Central Regional Juvenile Detention Center Meeting. Probably things to talk about there. We had had our James attend the Georgetown Conference on Rulemaking Issues Regarding Restrictive Procedures. A lot of interesting things happened there. And one of the real concerns that our facility had was in regards to disciplinary room time and how that's handled. There's been some legislation that says you shouldn't have it, and they, they don't understand that there's times when it's needed for the safety of not only the other kids within the facility, but also the, our staff that work there. So, there's, there become some critical events that can occur in those facilities. And so, right now, there's no new rules yet on that. They continue to monitor that. And I think there's movement in the right direction. I think they're better understanding the needs of the facilities and what they need to be able to do. We did review the 2023 budget through June. We are still anticipating a revenues over expenditures. We established a new non-member rate for non-members for 2024. It went from $340 to $350 per day. The, we did approve the preliminary budget for 2024, and including, that included that anticipated increase in the non-member rate. And if you recall, all the, all the members, their fees are based on a two-year look-back. And in the case of Clay County, the two-year look-back puts us at an increase for Clay County for 2024 of $91,800. For, you know, for, and again, it's because our usage was higher than, than some of the others. So, let's see, I think that pretty much wraps that one up. Then yesterday, I attended, as well as Commissioner Mojo, the DMV Design and Construction Look, and I, she recapped it pretty well. We were looking at floor finishing, ceiling tiles, heights, and, and we had even, they even got into the caseworks, which was, you know, a little bit more than what I guess some of us needed to be there for. But I'm glad they're going through and looking at it. The state of Minnesota did come back with that facility. There, there's 1,200 square feet reserved for them. And prior to that, they, prior to this, the previous meeting, they hadn't been part of the interior design of that. And so, they came back here two weeks ago and said that the, the design that was, the outline of the design didn't meet what they wanted. And so, they came back now, this, this time with a, with a new layout. And what, what we talked to them about, or talked to our architects and everybody involved is, is accepting their floor plan layout. And in terms of what we would do is, we would build the walls now that, that would be needed to, to fit that design. But we will not be doing any furniture and fixtures, or flooring, or any of that type of thing, because we're looking at three-plus years potentially before they even move in. So, we've, we've kind of cut back on, on interior costs associated with that, other than the structural items that are better to do now than to wait and do later. So, let's see. I think that, I think that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if I could follow up Commissioner Campbell's comments in regards to the juvenile center, I think it's important for the commission to also know is that the increased cost on the two-year look-back, part of the vision of that facility was to be able to have the additional spaces, which would allow programs to be developed, which would keep Clay County kids in Clay County. And I think that James and his staff have done a good job. We just had a meeting last week with Rhonda and, and James. And, and part of, the numbers showed that some of those kids over the last two years are staying here in Clay County, and that's reflected in that increased number.
Yeah, so, you know, that, that 91,000 increase to us, that, technically, that could be considerably less than had we not had the ability to keep those kids here, because sending them out of county was a lot more expensive. So, yeah.
Thank you. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, on Tuesday, the 18th, I attended the PIC meeting. We had a discussion with Sheriff Hemting and his staff on the Public Safety Funds. That is a work in progress. But the discussion took place, and we looked at some options. Later that day, I also attended the Legislative Wrap-Up sponsored by the Chamber and by Moorhead Business Association. I'll concur with Commissioner Campbell. A lot of different views on claiming success or failure in some areas. We obviously had one of the more productive, busy legislative sessions that I can recall. A lot of, a lot of things were, were put forward. We'll see how they work. But once again, I think there wasn't an issue, or a desire expressed by a lot of people there, that we look at border cities, border communities. And keep in mind that we're the fourth fastest-growing county in the state of Minnesota, and some legislation needs to be put forward to help us constructively co, work constructively with our communities here in the North Dakota side. So, hopefully, we'll continue to communicate with our legislators on those needs. On Thursday, virtually attended the Clay County Suicide and Substance Prevention Coalition Meeting. We had a presentation by Kyle Christensen, who is now started, he has been with Lotus. He started the Good Vibes Counseling here in Moorhead. He's got a long history of working with substance abuse individuals. And he presented the use of cannabis as a harm reduction for adults. He made it real clear his beliefs did not extend to youth, that it was individuals whose brains had fully developed, which he identified as 24 and younger, or over 24. He's a peer recovery counselor, and he works at Sanford. I lost part of his presentation because my computer decided to re, to update its software. And when I got back on there, he did talk about how cannabis has been helpful for mental health and for some addiction treatment. He was kind of the counterpoint we had with some of the other presenters. Gave cautionary tales about legalized cannabis. So, we've heard both sides of the, of the issue. We had a update on the education sessions for new Americans. There's been five sessions, 64 participants, and they've been provided with a list of culturally responsive resources. And they're working on some of the language barriers and providing mental health services to our new Americans. Rory Beal with Clay County Public Health discussed the position that we voted on a couple of weeks ago for an opioid program manager, full-time, talked about what that position was envisioned, and that we are still accepting applications. Later that day, I attended a West Central Regional Juvenile Center Board Meeting, which has already been covered by Commissioner Campbell. I just want to make an observation. It was a year ago or two years ago that we were embroiled in a discussion with Department of Correction personnel about disciplinary room time and some of the other legislation that's been, been offered. And in, in the most recent case, was passed by our legislature. And we've gone from the point of debating the value of this legislation to where our director, James O'Donnell, has been invited to work with Department of Corrections in coming up with clear policy. Legislation was passed that the DOC said they can't enforce because it eliminated disciplinary room time. We have credibility enough within our own administration of our, our juvenile center to where James has become a voice in this state for the view of professional administrators in juvenile corrections. So, quite proud of him. He presented a good presentation on working with the Georgetown Project, where he, he was invited by DOC to come out and participate. So, very good response from us and all the rest of the board on how the juvenile center's being, being administered. And we did cover the budget. All that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell, who's much better addressing budget issues than any, any of the rest of us here. So, we are coming in with, at a profit at this point. And that completes my report.
Any meetings I had was the Personnel Issues Committee, where Sheriff Hemting presented the, I think he's getting avail, he has some $942,000 from the state, and plans to utilize that for salary increases, or not, or by, or step increases. But I think a lot of discussion on, we do the DAO reevaluation that we're planning on doing next year. So, there'll be a lot further more discussions coming up on that. Next thing, I also attended the Legislative Discussion, and I thought it was a very good discussion. They gave some good, good answers there, and good talk, good, good questions, good, good discussions, good answers. And very happy with the turnout of there. A lot of people there. So, those were my items. But Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two points of clarification before I start. Commissioner Mojo mentioned the AMC Tax Forfeiture Work Group. Do we want to provide that on our committee assignments with per diem? We didn't take any action on that.
One was that, excuse me, I'm sorry.
The AMC Tax Forfeiture?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Mojo talked about adding that to our committee assignments with per diem mileage.
Wouldn't, excuse me, wouldn't AMC pay for that?
It is similar to the other committees that we all serve on for AMC. Those reimbursements come from the county budget. We're not anticipating more than three or four committees.
I would, I would recommend that be added to our portfolio per diem.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
We got a motion of second to add the, to our committee assignments. All in favor? Aye.
All right, thank you. The second thing I did, just wanted to clarify that Commissioner Campbell's request or question in regards to, to the DMV fee for Klein-McCarthy, you're correct, there's, the total cost of the project, they get a percentage of that. So, with the increase to the B3, their percentage would increase. If you recall back in September of last year, we did, we did establish two flat fees. One, we paid them $22,000, Klein-McCarthy, for their services in, in addressing the B3 issue. We also say, we also had to bring on a B3 administrator. And that, that, that also included reviewing the energy, the carbon, water, retainer, landscaping, acoustical issues. And the board approved $227,000 to address that issue. So, so that, those two are flat rates, but as, as we talked about before, yes, the, the total cost of the B3s will be factored into the end, end fee for Klein-McCarthy.
And, and, and that, that additional fees will fall outside of the $400,000?
Correct.
Intingency.
Correct.
It'll be an additional cost to the project.
Yes. Last Tuesday, I participated in the PIC presentation. I, I do think, just a point of clarification, it is public, public safety funds, but statute is very clear that this board has, has the power over the funds and how it's, how it's given. The Sheriff's Department, the county attorneys, probation, those are some of the people that are listed in there. in there. And so one of the things, I guess, just from a discussion standpoint, we don't have to have it today, but one of the things that, just on the good discussion that we've had, $942,000 is a pretty significant amount of money. So, you know, one of the things that, that I think this board has been successful in through ARPA and CARES, is having, having a group of people getting together, both elected and, and county departments, look at that fund to find out what the best funding sources are. And so maybe open it up for discussion of whether the board feel, feels like it would be beneficial to bring a committee together. I know we don't need another committee, but I do think that this is a significant dollar amount versus kind of randomly picking that we have a plan moving forward with what we're going to do with this money.
I was wondering whether we should have a work-study or meeting-type of thing. We're all pressing on that, because I think it is very important. How we're going to divide up that money?
Well, you know, and I can just speak to the ARPA piece. When that was a standing committee, as ideas came forward, it was kind of a sounding board, and, and then we could push on the rest of the proposals to the, the full board. But I really did see the benefit. I think that was important to have some of those conversations, to provide clarity to not only this board, but for the departments that might want to utilize some of those funds. You know, I, I know that Commissioner Ebinger serves on the Public Safety Committee. I certainly think that having him at least part of whatever a committee would be, I think is important, and certainly whoever else wants to do that, that would be fine, but.
We've really got a, a lot of money. It certainly pales when you compare it to ARPA and some of the other funds, but we've got a lot of money that could be spent in a number of ways. The Sheriff's Department has some needs. I think that was shown in PIC. There's some staffing issues that really need to be addressed, but there are other aspects to the public safety structure we have in Clay County that need some help. And it's an opportunity to, to make a good, objective evaluation of where we're at, and where some needs are, and put some funds towards it.
So I don't, I don't know, Commissioner Campbell, or Commissioner Gross, if either of you have a preference?
I like working on budget stuff, but it's Frank, if you want.
Well, as far as another committee, I don't know if we need another committee. You know, I just think, I think this is a very, a lot of money, and I think we should all be involved in making a decision on that, not just a committee making a recommendation or something like that. That's why I say a work-study group or whatever would, would be important, I think.
So, so a work group with a format that, would you then be asking, like Sheriff Empting brought forward his request, and we would be looking to have this, the full board kind of determine?
Well, I would think that Brian should be involved in the thing, you know, because and probably Janelle. I don't know if they can all get funds for that. You mentioned several different departments that could get funds for that, and we only heard one request right now for, for that 942,000, you know, and they say, okay, we'll go with that request. I don't know if that's sufficient.
Yeah, and I completely agree with what you're saying. I think, I think it's maybe a two-step process. I think there needs to be, I think part of the issue is, we're trying to use these funds to provide legacy-type, legacy-type issues, right? We're trying to address this one-time funding that is, you know, a $900,000 gift, but wanting to, gift, but wanting to do it in a way that's really thoughtful. And, and if we schedule a one-time work group, I'm worried that, that maybe, you know, Brian's department, or Sheriff Empting, or, you know, if Janelle with probation, or James, I mean, just, just rush to get something in front of the, you know, the work group before all the funds are dispersed, as opposed to maybe seeing how things are going. With the PIC committee, I believe there was kind of the thought that, that's wait and see what we can analyze wages in the next year, correct? I mean, so it's, it's not something that we're going to all of a sudden address next week.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree with Commissioner Mojo. I, you know, and again, I, you know, there's, there's a good part about having the funds, and then there's a part about the, the competition level, who gets the funds internally. And there's a lot of things that go on, and I think, I think a subgroup is a sounding board to kind of hear what everybody, what they would use it for, how they would use it, whether it be as a more of a legacy issue. I think some of these things, I think, are meant more to, you know, there certainly is a, there are one-time assistance to a budget. So, you know, I certainly don't think that's a bad idea to, you know, and I do think that Commissioner Ebinger should, as a public safety and all of his familiarity in that area should be on there. But I, I think as a sounding board and maybe a, a way to collect information, which then ultimately could lead to what you want, Mr. Chair, regarding a, a sub, or a group, or a, whatever we used to call those, committee of the whole concept-type meetings to go over it. But I, but I think in terms of putting all of the information together, somebody's going to have to make the ultimate decision, and it's going to be this board.
I, I, I agree with that. One of the things to keep in mind is particularly so far, what's been suggested from the Sheriff's Office, will ultimately result in a recurring cost. So we need to be mindful, and that decision obviously has got to be made by the entire commission.
But I, I do think that this board, we're, I, I appreciate work groups, and I certainly think that there is a component of this discussion that we'll need to have a work group, so that this board can understand the direction in which we want those funds to be used. I'm just saying, I think there needs to be some committee-level discussions before it gets to that point.
Right.
So that, that we can provide some sort of insight to the departments that are requesting it. But I, I agree with Frank. I absolutely think that, that maybe before it even comes to full board approval, that we are able to have kind of a session, a planning session, on what we want for them.
We found out in PIC last week that some of the answers aren't there. Sheriff's Office can present some projected costs and that sort of thing, but, you know, our, we're, we're doing a, a year earlier evaluation of the four positions in the Sheriff's Office, just to get an idea on this. If we have the same issues come up with anyone, any other department that wants to apply for funding, and we have questions that need action on their part, that's sort of what I envision a committee being, or the, the group being put together here handles, and make sure that it's ready for primetime when it comes before a work group with the entire commission to review it, and the facts and the data and the things that are needed are there.
Well, I think too, from the PIC committee, you know, it is a one-time funding, you know, and with Sheriff Empting's proposal is a forever time, you know, it's going to continue year after year. So I think we have to look at, is that the right place for the funding? I think he's got a valid concern, and we'll find that probably out next year, you know, so.
I think that's-
I'm concerned about how we divide those funds.
And that, and that's, and that's why we need to, you know, you get this subgroup that can, not only, not only do you hear just from Sheriff Empting, but you hear from the other areas, and, and then the difficulty decision has to be made. And, and I don't, you know, and I, I agree from what I am hearing, it's, it sounds like there's some proposals out there that, that, sure, this will, this will buy down the first year of those ideas, but then they continue to be an expanded cost that will go on year after year after year after year. And I don't know that, you know, I don't even know if that was really the intent of, of the purpose of these funds, but it, you know, we'll have to be looking at all of that.
Also, the question is, do we want to establish a committee? Is that?
I, I think, if, what I'm hearing the, the commission say is, they're looking at establishing a committee. That committee will vet it, and I'm not saying it should go through PIC, but this, this committee would vet it, and then bring, bring the polished requests before the full commission, and then the commission would then have, and the, all of you would have insight on which path you'd like to go.
It's, it's, it's clear that however those dollars are used, they're going to have an impact on our 2024 budget, right? It's clear that that's going to be the case.
Yeah.
And how we best, can best-
I mean, I just think it's a lot of money, just for a committee to say, okay, for the PIC committee to say, yeah, I think it's a good idea. Let's go do what, name that whole committee.
And I guess what I, what, how I look at it, Commissioner, Commissioner Gross is, I mean, sometimes the PIC gets a presentation where they just say, no. Not very often, but sometimes. Generally, what happens is, as the PIC rotates, you know, you have a, you, you all have a sense of, of what, where the board is at. Again, you're individuals, but you have a sense. And what, a lot of times, I think what this committee could do, and like what PIC does, is you bring this in, the commissioners on the PIC can give their feedback of, you know, how is this best look to move forward? And if it's not a great idea, maybe it'll get vetted out, but, but I think bringing forward the things that are going to be the, the most successful with, with these funds are going to come out of that, which there, what you would get would be the proposals that, that, from that, that committee that would, would be valid of funding in, in that committee's eyes. But ultimately, as a group, you would hear those and then determine whether or not, you know, if you, you may like something, you know, is your top priority versus the fifth priority, and that could, oops, that could all be discussed during that, that work, that work group.
And I, I guess in terms of cohesiveness, I struggle with those, some of those proposals will go to PIC, and that makes sense, but not all of the proposals for the, those funds would go to PIC. I mean, so I think that's where you have to have a standalone component that, that you can address those funds, all of those requests. And, you know, and if it's a money issue, we're really not, you know, whatever you'd set aside for ARPA funds in terms of per diems, it's not a per diem issue, because ARPA is hardly meeting at all. So I think it would just maybe eliminate the need for a couple PIC committee meetings and/or ARPA committee meetings. So financially, it's not going to cost the county more to have a subgroup that specifically looks at that.
Well, I think the ARPA group is another good place to look at it, I guess, but I just think it has to be looked at. I think it's an important decision. I think the Sheriff's Department is a good, valid point, you know, and I just, but there's other departments involved in it, you know, can we, how do we utilize that money? I don't know if it takes another committee or not.
I'll see if there's a motion.
Well, you know, I, I will make a motion to create a committee to look at those public safety funds. I'm not hearing exactly who, between the two, two on the side, which one of you would like to be on it, so I'll make a motion to create that committee, and then we can work on those appointments after.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion to approve a committee to review those funds that we're receiving for, I think it's Public Safety they're called. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So then with that, my hope is any recommendation that comes out of that committee, and you can work on that, I would like those recommendations to go to a full board work group before county word action.
So is anybody want, want to volunteer for this committee?
Well, I think Commissioner Ebinger certainly should serve in that capacity. I'm going to step aside and let the two of you decide which one would like-
Well, I, I'd be happy to do it too, but it, you know, it doesn't have to be me.
I have a me.
I'm happy to accept.
I'll make a motion that Kevin and Dave be on the committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. On the 19th, I participated in pre-budget meetings with both the probation and attorney's budgets that you heard this morning. Also met with Mr. Milton on a series of county issues. We also met, we've had, we have a, been updating our fleet vehicle policy. We'll be bringing that before the board in the next couple of weeks for your approval. Met with Justin, talked about a number of different issues on the highway. Their projects are, some of our projects are going to be starting here shortly. MCCJPA met on the 20th for a prep meeting. A good focus of what we're going to have on the next agenda is the appraisals for the upstream area.
Mr. Chair, Steve, I, the MCCJPA didn't meet, but-
Oh, sorry, the pre-meet, the pre, the pre-meeting. Yes, sorry. And so we discussed that appraisals. That will be discussed on Thursday at this upcoming, upcoming board MCCJPA meeting. Talked to, on the 20th, also talked with Commissioner Mojo in regards to some of the items on what's been happening on campus. On the 20th, also met with Rhonda, Michelle Thoridall, and James O'Donnell, and Josh Swanson, and as I mentioned earlier, and some programming reviews, and working to, to look at the needs of, excuse me, social services, and how those needs can be met through the facility. Participated yesterday in the design meeting for the DMV. That's been well-covered. Just of note, we, we are scheduled to meet on Monday to interview firms for the CM, CM at Risk, for, for the DMV project. And I think that concludes my report.
I just noticed that our, our schedule says 10, 10 a.m., but I think it's 11:15 a.m.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have adjusted that time to 11:15.
Okay. Anybody else? Brian?
No, Mr. Chair.
Jackie, come on.
Thank you. We're adjourned.